It is, um, it is 10 o'clock. I am going to call, this is a joint meeting that I'm going to call to order. And it is between the Gillum County Court and the local contract review board. And commissioners, this is going to be kind of a funky thing. So for quorum, you guys are both serving as a county court member at the moment and as a member of the local contract review board. They're one in the same. And so you're wearing two hats. And so the chair notes that there is a quorum of both boards present. We are all here. And we're going to move into a joint public hearing to receive public comment on resolution number R 2023 dash zero four. A joint resolution on the county court and local contract review board opting out of attorney generals model, public contracting rules and amending public contracting rules for Gillum County. This is the time duly set and advertised for a joint public hearing between the Gillum County Court and the Gillum County Local Contract Review Board. The purpose of the hearing is to receive public comment on Gillum County's draft findings, supporting the exemption of certain classes of the special procurements and public improvement contracts from competitive bidding requirements. This is a legislative hearing. All those in attendance that wish to testify are asked to receive recognition from the chair that state your name and address for the record. The hearing is now open. For those who are signing in via the Zoom platform, if you are dialing in, it is star six to unmute yourself. If you are here on your computer, it's the lower hat, the left-hand side of the Zoom platform to unmute yourself. And we'll give folks a second to unmute if you would like to provide public comment. Any here? Any on? Hey, if not, um, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And then the two boards will move into consideration of approval of joint resolution number R 2023 dash zero four, a joint resolution of the county court and local contract review board opting out of the attorney general's model public contracting rules and amending public contracting rules for Gillum County. And so commissioners, uh, just as a kind of review, back in 2020 was the last time that we updated our public procurement, public contracting roles for Gillum County. Um, basically what this is doing is it allows us to opt out of the state's sort of model public contracting rules. It allows us to simplify and tailor our rules to better fit our size and organizational needs. Um, then in 2021, the legislature blessed them, came in and adopted several new rules, some of which are actually helpful to us. Um, and so we need to pass updated contracting rules in order to remain in compliance with state law. And specifically the two rules that our attorney wanted us to point out, uh, the legislature increased the small procurement threshold for public improvement contracts from 5,000 to 10,000, um, which is very helpful. And some of our little small building contracts, we were having to go out and do procurement for anything over 5,000, which is pretty much anything you want to do these days. And then, um, number two, public hearings are no longer necessarily required for public improvement contract exemptions. Um, as long as we do, the statewide published notice, um, uh, continues to be required. And then the hearing is only required upon request. Um, so, uh, these were actually drafted by our county's legal counsel, Carrie Connolly, who is an expert on state procurement. And so this is a package that goes out to all of their clients, basically, uh, whenever this happens. So they've all been checked out by legal counsel and, um, yeah.
So the rules that are in here, which are in draft, I believe, are those specific to Gillum County or is that what the all counties or has to?
So the, the 99-page public contracting rules, that one is standard.
Okay.
The ones that are actually in the resolution, the exemptions, those, uh, she gave us a template. And then Delaney and I went through just to see if there were any that we needed to adjust. We actually just accepted all of the language that she sent. Um, but like, for instance, in here, you'll note, like it says, the county court in several places, well, in other counties that might be the board of commissioners or somebody else. Um, so we just basically accepted all of the language that she sent.
I was just wondering if there was a manual, if you had contracting questions that you could go to the county to answer them.
Yeah, so for ours, typically what we do is if it's something that's an anomaly, we will just call Carrie and say, what process do we need to follow? Because even though it's, um, she simplified it as much as possible in that 99 pages, it's very confusing what's, uh, what counts as what.
I agree.
And so, yeah, in general, we have these and then we just call her when we have something that's, uh, new. And any questions? If not, the resolution motion is in there and you will see, it needs to be very specific. Cause it has to be both the county court and the local, local contract review board that is making a joint motion. So.
So I move to approve resolution number R 2023 dash oh four as presented on behalf of Gillum County and on behalf of the county's local contract review board.
Second, so moved and seconded, we approved resolution number R 2023 dash zero four as presented on behalf of Gillum County and on behalf of the county's local contract review board in the further discussion. All those in favor? Hi, I'm standing opposed. Motion carries. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the joint meeting. Um, so that one is done and then we will go ahead and call the regular meeting to order. This is a meeting of the county courts. Um, the chair notes that there is a quorum present and we will do the flux that was right behind you guys. I. Have been a states of America and to the calling for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 2.0 additions and revisions to the agenda? It's how many?
I have none.
How are you sure?
I'm sure.
Give me a beaver. 3.0 correspondence and public comment. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting. Speakers are asked to raise your hand to be recognized by the chair, give your name and address and limit comments to three minutes. Again, if you are dialing your phone right now to listen to us, it is star six to unmute yourself. You're on your computer, it's the lower left-hand side of your Zoom platform. Uh, one second, Chris. And, um, I'd just like to remind folks that as we move through the agenda, we are informal here. So, um, fill three as we move through to ask questions, provide feedback. Chris, go ahead.
I just wanted to give a brief report on the justice court. I'm Chris Patfield, I'm Gillum County Justice of the Peace. My address is probably Oregon. I want to report on three things, just briefly, our revenue to date, um, the legislative session and our efforts to connect Norcore to video court. And as far as revenue goes, thus far, for a $225,000 revenue budget that goes directly into Gillum County's general fund that, um, we have until June 30th to collect, we've collected $204,000. So we're only shy $21,000. So we have been collecting that in the month historically. So just letting you know where we're sitting there, we're sitting good with our revenue. We far exceeded, um, historically what we budgeted. Our collection rates are the direct result of the justice support myself, Leona and Kayla Ruba sharing ideas for better efficiency by working with defendants, implementing alternative appearance options, email communications and assisting in utilizing online payment system. We also utilize a collection agency for those we completely lose track of. We work hard to ensure judgments are posted and settled. Our case count for 2022 was over 2,000 citations. These are criminal and traffic violations. For the legislative session, I'm the president of the Oregon Justice of the Peace Association and working closely with our lobbyist, Patrick Singh, the Oregon municipal judges and the Justice of Peace legislative committee to track legislation affecting justice courts. I'm in daily, weekly communication with all of these parties and our lobbyists specifically. The Oregon, um, excuse me, Association of Oregon Counties has been extremely helpful in this session in communicating with us on input with legislation that may affect the courts. And it has been greatly appreciated. The communication has been really good with ALC this year. Webex to Norcore, Circuit Court has gone to a completely webex system. Webex is similar to a Zoom platform, but it's tailored to courts. And this has been something I needed to, we use Webex, but we were not connected to Norcore. So when we had defendants in custody, we needed to be able to, um, find a way to set up virtual court. And Circuit Court, Court Administrator Ryan Beach has helped us to make that happen and we got that down this week. So that's a huge step forward. It's very important to see defendants that appear from Norcore rather than appear by phone because I may have a domestic violence situation, driving into the intoxicant situation or defendant who has a risk to themselves or others. And I need to see them to know because I'm making release decisions based on what I find out that day. So I just wanted to report on those things and update you because you can't know what I do unless I tell you. You're always invited to the justice court to please see what we do. This week we've had an eviction case, small claims cases, traffic cases, my first speed racing case in 20 years that I had. So.
You said speed racing?
Speed racing.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, any other public comments, please? Okay, we'll move into correspondence. Um, I've got a couple of items to hear. One is a letter from Eileen Carter in capacity as president of Gillum County Historical Society. Um, basically just providing some feedback on some of the things that the historical society, historical society has done with some of the county grants that they've received, some of the other grant, um, activities that they've been doing and indicating that they are, um, really interested in partnering, um, with the Kelly consulting, I think that we talked about last, uh, meeting. That they, they would be raising their hands to be one of the nonprofits that gets to work with, um, work with them. Um.
This must have been in the rural light, the.
Yeah, there's an article, I think that was a rural light. Um, there is a letter from several residents who are not Gillum County residents, um, related to loading machine certifications in Oregon. Um, so I, either of these I'm going to read, uh, cause they're both lengthy, but if anybody wants to read them, then, um, they are part of the course packet on the website. And then the last one was a mail that I sent to Commissioner Watkins that we will add. Um, from Eli, I don't know how his, he spells his last name, Kudiel. Um, who's a Conan resident, uh, regarding utility efficiency programs. So we will include that as well as part of the. That is it for that. I will move on to the fourth one, sorry, we'll send you to the agenda. Questions and all this.
I do not.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The move and seconded to approve the consent agenda, which consists of consider approval of February 1st, 2023 regular meeting minutes, consider approval of January 18th, 2023 regular meeting minutes, consider approval of February 1st, 2023 executive session minutes and consider approval of grants and middle requests for USDA world business level. Then further discussion. All those in favor?
Right.
I, I, any opposed? Okay, moving on to end of the business, uh, we'll go into broadband project phase one presentation. And we have Eric Gordon with us now of Ellis Networks. And, and I'll just kind of set these up for folks who may not be familiar, is that we had contracted with, um, Eric Sumney, who has since been hired by Ellis Networks to give this county court sort of a high-level overview of what it would take to meet our strategic goal of bringing broadband to every household in the county. So he's been working for about a year, um, figuring out the mapping and where there are gaps and where there are assets that might help fill the gaps. And the idea commissioners is that we would receive the information today and then think about if we want to proceed to a phase two, which is actually asking, um, for detailed engineered plans and a budget that would then position us to go compete for the federal infrastructure dollars that are down there. You know where?
Great thing. Uh, just wanted to make a public introduction. So I have Heath Brandonberg moving on the line. So, um, he was with Construction Consulting, so as Liz had mentioned, uh, I was the former owner of Construction Consulting. We were acquired in October, uh, or we had bid on this contract, uh, originally as Construction Consulting. I have about 15 years in utility construction experience and about 22 years in communications engineering, specializing in outside of playing infrastructure design. And, uh, in October of 2022, our company was acquired by Ellis Networks, which was one of our major clients. Uh, and they're a Northwest Regional Internet Service Provider. You know, over 7,000 route miles of connectivity in Oregon, Washington. And also they are low spread across Oregon, Washington, about 140, uh, communities, providing internet services, voice data services. And so it was a strategic acquisition, uh, myself and he who was with Construction and already I introduced himself in a moment. He was a senior designer, engineer with Construction and our whole team at Construction essentially moved over to Ellis Networks. And we are now the infrastructure and heritage of Ellis Networks. And, uh, I am the VP of that department, leading that team. And so it's a little bit of a unique situation because we're now, you know, as consultants, we're now uh, working for a service provider, but we did ask for consent for contracts to be assigned and continue to provide services. And that's primarily in, uh, agency and municipality, you know, city, states, government agencies that didn't have like a conflict of interest or, uh, direct competition with other service providers. And so we're continuing to outsource engineering services, um, to non-Ellisian customers and projects. So just wanted to put a little background there. So, uh, Heath, can you just give a quick introduction?
Just trying to find unmuted here. Okay, Heath Brandberg with Ellis Networks, um, infrastructure planner and designer. Been in telecom since about 1997, uh, specializing in high-level designs for, um, citywide, countywide, statewide projects for probably the last 10 years or so. So been working with Eric since was it 2000, I think it was, started in Construction?
Yeah.
Well, okay.
Or sorry, 2020, not 2000.
Added a couple, but yeah. So he is now over, um, in our planning department now as a, uh, LDD planning. So he's kind of doing the mix of engineering, design and planning, high-level design planning, um, for projects. So on the screen, uh, he's sharing, we're going to go through a map and talk about some of the components, kind of an outline of what the, the original RP and project, um, scope was. Uh, and then we'll kind of go through, step through and address, uh, the various, our various findings, uh, associated with it. So, I don't know if there's a way that we would use the site string on there. So, um, great, thank you very much. So basically this is that illustration detail of the page one of Gillum County and all of you guys didn't see, okay? But essentially this, the scope of work was to identify, uh, potential service locations within the county that were outside of city limits of Arlington and Condon. And so basically everything countywide, uh, rural homes, uh, businesses, potential targets for connectivity that we did identify. And then to do an assessment of existing conditions, including service providers, utilities and other potential infrastructure resources. Proposed some conceptual underground and aerial routes associated with, to provide fiber optic connectivity to those sites. Uh, identification of terrain and construction challenges, uh, that might be encountered, uh, if you remove forward with the bill. And then conceptual high-level design to provide services, um, provided services to those identified locations. So I want to thank, uh, Gillum County, uh, the Gillum County Sheriff's Office, who help me basically co-op wind wave and Pacific Power and Light for providing essentially the G S data. So we were able to, um, obtain a lot of data that got incorporated into the map for us to do analysis. So, uh, go ahead and report. So this first map shows an outline. So the address data was provided by the Gillum County Sheriff's Office and was, um, validated and installed on the map. And the sheriff's office keeps this database, G S database for tracking, uh, probably for emergency services and whatnot. Or 911 and accessibility locations as, uh, some of them are pretty, some pretty remote locations. So we identified 507 points and we call points as potential service, uh, locations that were outside of the urban broke boundary of the communities as identified in, uh, scope of services. Uh, and then included residential, commercial and utility sites that could be identified. Those are all identified by the, uh, green squares on the map. So as you can see, uh, pretty spread out, uh, across countywide, um, a few concentrated clustered areas of, uh, homes and businesses and potential targets for connectivity. There's, and I can stop at each one of the slides and, you know, maybe that might be a time to any answer any questions that might come up specific to a slide.
So can I ask you, it's like right around the city of Condon, did you just assume that it was, um, had internet from the town or?
So based on the scope of work, the, the city limits of Condon were excluded because they were being served by existing service providers. I think that there's home telephone, uh, there's a couple others that are in town. And I believe that there is a fiber home system here existing.
Yeah, I'm just looking at Condon and going, I will see a little square where my house is. That's why I'm wondering.
We can zoom into greater detail on this. You can zoom in here and it'll kind of identify, you can see, um, on the outskirts outside the boundaries, you can see some of those.
You see your house? Yeah.
All right, you're good?
Yeah.
And so that was said, we, we intentionally excluded those areas based on the scope of work. Uh, because they already had connectivity of some form.
And that's also based on what we're learning about how the state will treat, what will be eligible, what won't, won't be eligible for the infrastructure.
I'll, I'll just say that I'm connected, but it's not very good, so.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, so yeah, so it's from a grant standpoint, and there's, there's many different grants available. And, and I don't have all the details of those, but, uh, all of them rely on census data and various aspects of where they've awarded grants in the past. Um, and then the areas that meet the, the SEC definition of broadband connectivity. And that's a bit of a moving target and lagging. And so essentially you can apply for grants where areas that, that have connectivity, good connectivity meets their, uh, meets their criteria for adequate broadband service.
Where does that land?
And so it's a big point of a contention for, for a lot of people. Uh, and, and a lot of, you know, that can even satellite startling, we're in activity. Some of those have been recipients of some of those grants. So even, you know, they could justify meeting that definition, but that doesn't necessarily mean they always meet that definition. So again, there's a bit of controversy there as far as who's awarded those grants and why. Uh, any other questions, comments before we move to the next slide? Okay, go ahead. So, uh, we reached out and had a couple of, of working sessions, uh, with the broadband planning team. Uh, and we were identified where we had existing infrastructure assets with other partners that could potentially be leveraged. So on the map here, we've incorporated, um, uh, in the blue, the light blue at the top of the map is a wind wave, uh, fiber connectivity coming through the north part of the town. Uh, the green line extending down to the middle is a city of Condon partnered with a wind wave for a fiber connection and then the city, and I'm not sure if the county. They have strands in that too. So there's an existing fiber asset in place there that extends, uh, south from Arlington to Condon. Uh, and then the pink line incorporated in was help me basically later co-op. They have, uh, existing conduit vaults. And I'm not sure if they populated it with fiber yet. Asset that is, you know, joint build along a long haul provider route that kind of goes diagonal through.
That's a Z O.
That's the Z O. And so they have an asset there of existing underground infrastructure. Um, and they have expressed that they have a desire to, uh, be a partner and assistant so we could help leverage that. So, um, quick outline, 31.4 miles of existing county fiber, uh, 20, or city county, uh, combination fiber, um, 22.6 miles of existing C D C conduit and 32.3 miles of wind wave fiber identified as possible existing infrastructure resources that are reflected on the map. Which is, uh, is pretty, pretty large coverage. It almost creates a, um, existing backbone and or middle mile route for connectivity. Uh, which is, you know, that total mileage is a substantial, um, savings when it, when it comes to potentially building those routes yourself. Now the things that haven't been vetted out as part of the scope is, is you know, what is the availability of fiber? How much, you know, is there a cost associated with it? You know, obviously you leverage the county's fiber strands, uh, to best our ability, but whether it needs to be augmented or not with additional capacity, things like that. Um, so those are all going to be considerations, uh, to take into place, but.
And I believe when that middle mile, the green one was created, one of the things we asked when we was the builder, um, was to move up the points of presence with existing C D C, uh, transmission lines. Okay. And so hopefully that would be helpful as well, but those, I'm hoping we coordinated in that belt.
Yeah, access points to be able to leverage that. Cause it's one thing to have this, uh, express fiber from end to end with no access points. So, uh, you know, strategically it sounds like it was provisioned so that there would be locations where that resource could be tapped access. And to put lateral to canyon off the bed.
This for this court, but I'm pretty sure that they did that, um, yeah.
This might be a question for Brian, but, um, the blue with the wind wave, I know Avon Grid ran from, I don't know, Trequan Road or whatever it is over to the substation and the solar stuff, is that on there? Can you tell?
Well, if Brandon can do that or yeah.
Yeah, man, it went down to Shuttler and, you know.
That is, um, no, it's not represented. Yeah, so it, it, it isn't because, I mean, I believe like the, the wind wave line came in up a, up a baseline um, and comes into the Olet substation. And then from there they ran two miles north to get to our collector substation. And that's how we tied into fiber. So there's another fiber line that's coming in just on the southward, so Shutter Flat there, Eric.
Yep.
And, and so, yeah, it comes in a, a long baseline road into Olet. So that was the end of the wind waves part one to the best of my.
It was installed in the last year and a half.
Okay. And so probably the, we haven't been divided maps. I know we've worked with Blake Lawrence over Windwave, um, to get the maps, uh, at the time these were generated. And so perhaps that information wasn't included. Blake was the guy who helped me get fiber, so he's pretty well aware of it. So, yeah, he's the right guy.
One thing we have been asked, um, we've asked, I asked for fill this the other day and then we would ask you guys as well, is if you, if you ever are doing, we're bringing fiber into a new project, just having that, like, heads up, like, we're going to have a hole in the ground and maybe having. Just having that, like we're gonna have a hole in the ground and maybe having a discussion about. Even if it tries to able to just bury conduit, um because it is so expensive to have. Um that we would love to have those opportunities, just as you're going about your normal business kind of thing, if there are ways that we can. Bury extra conduit that saves a lot on these kinds of projects. Um the digging is the expensive part in this.
Absolutely. And I would, I would second that. I've always been an advocate uh as a, as a consultant, working with a lot of different service providers. And uh public agencies, when I, I would always encourage to, to, you know, foster those relationships. Look for opportunities to build together, joint build, uh work with the cities and counties to identify your projects. Uh understand their projects, see how you can, because there's, you think about it, you bring one other person to the, to the table in partnership like that. It cuts your construction cost and material costs in half. And then if you can get multiples in, you know, it just really drives that cost down. And even if you don't have a plan in place, you know, having, having some fundamental basic uh specifications or putting conduit in the ground and mapping it. And then just documenting that is really beneficial. So. Yeah, so we've, we've been kind of, it's been a long, I'm, I'm working on this currently with Wasco County and I have a Q life. Who is um, you know, working partner with the uh to provide two months of the same work now he's trying to do, killing here and getting. You know, broadband fibers in some of the more rural communities. So um we're tackling this right now as, as part of so um. Can we give some of those strand fiber that we have that we just ran for eleven miles? I mean, it doesn't help tremendously. But it it starts getting them trying to down to closer to Shannick Hill, closer to Antelope, where they're trying to bring province. So on our overhead poles, so yeah, it means gold, you know, forty eight pieces of fiber. Uh we don't need them all right now and in the future, but um at least that that may shorten the distance for them. Um so there's definitely hurdles internally, like getting on our facilities, not becoming a shared provider, which we don't want to open ourselves up to that. But uh anyways, we can sidebar about that. I wouldn't be able to help because we, you know, we didn't, we do have twelve miles of fiber. Um right now and there's so. Great, yeah, great. And I'm familiar with Q like two as comstructure. We designed the entire network. Yeah. In and, yeah, so very. They probably lost the input, so probably the H D M, one of the H D MIs at the other input where.
I had it screening, I had it um screen sharing. But my computer is acting up, so it's probably on my.
On the remote here, can you change the source?
I don't have it hooked up to anything. I have to set my computer up there. Sorry, my computer's not even working right at the moment.
Okay, hold on one second. Can I screenshot?
Should be able to, yes.
Is it, are you a wire connection? And uh.
No.
No, she's just sharing her screen from.
Our computer, so.
Miranda, you need to do something about your computer.
And it should pop up with the remote. There it goes.
All right. So uh yeah, so that's an overview of existing infrastructure assets. Sounds like there might be some additions that we could explore. Uh any other questions, comments? So uh based on those existing assets, uh what we did, what Keith went through. And um we actually had boots on the ground. Uh come out and pretty much drive and investigate all of the existing uh aerial pathways. Um out to these facilities to the best of our ability. Uh it was a daunting task to the field person was. Somehow pretty remote. He said the vehicle could quite be beating.
You don't say.
Oh, it was a, it was within, you know, it was a decent season. It was in the summertime, yeah, like summer. Yeah, it was a tough go and he was actually one of our experienced uh field engineers. That he said that he had actually helped build some of those, some of those lines for the phone company and whatnot. A long time ago, removed some of the open wire circuits and whatnot, so yeah, they brought back memory score now, so. So uh basically we came up with about three hundred and thirty seven point six miles of new aerial infrastructure would be required. And about sixty two point six miles of new underground built were identified. And so the red is the aerial path reflected here on the map. Uh the blue are underground paths associated. And these are areas where C B E C, their overhead line goes underground. Or they uh are fed from different directions and so their connectors. Uh intended to close the gap between those existing aerial infrastructure routes. And so pretty considerable footage uh associated with trying to find fiber to uh those locations. To service the entire county.
So um Liz, one thing I, and we were, I was in a court strategic plan meeting the other day. And there was um some mapping up and I don't remember it perfectly, but with the urban growth barrier around Arlington. I'm betting there's a lot of that that doesn't have fiber in it that won't be included on either side of this. So just throw that out there that I think there definitely in Arlington, there's urban growth area that has no fiber.
And is the Arlington K T V co-op and and planning to extend into those areas? So they're kind of right now no man's land?
Well, it's, I would say it's kind of a no man's land. It's not that they couldn't. I think that gets down to funding and how to do that.
Right, and so the urban growth boundary expands. It's like, okay, how do we extend? It's probably not just fiber optics or broadband, you know, it's probably other utilities and whatnot too, so.
Yeah, they're a shoestring, so having the capital to be able to.
Yeah, some of them have, I mean, there's gonna be some areas that do have some power and water and sewer and stuff and it's gonna be a mix.
So uh pretty considerable uh amount of new build required as you can see from the map. Um Homie Basin has really uh expressed their desire to be. Uh you know, a partner and to help wherever they can. Uh and when you think about it, back in the early nineteen hundreds, the twenties, the rural electric station. Uh initiative came out to provide rural like electric service to uh to homes and farms and whatnot. And so when you think about connectivity of all these rural communities uh and areas, remote areas. If, you know, most of them have power going to them. And so you have uh an automatic or, you know, an existing pathway in a form of connectivity to get to them. And and it makes probably the most sense to leverage and utilize that infrastructure. Because it's already going there now to be private electrical service. And so um this is the same concept, you know, COVID hit and it really just exposed. How uh unprepared we were and unconnected we were in these community schools. You know, difference learning, health, you know, all of the things that I'm sure you discussed them and struggled with. And so this is kind of like a, a, a new initiative to provide that connectivity to rural America. Um and it's, and it's great, the amount of funding that has been coming out is, is pretty astronomical, but very competitive environment.
Mm hmm.
Um so.
For the north part, you know, like the one that's running along eight uh eight four. Those are P P and L lines. Are they normally receptive? I mean, we know that our, like our co-op.
I'll talk to that too. So um we could probably bounce to the next slide. Um I think the next one uh brings it in. Uh let's see, oh, so this is the kind of a carry on from the last slide, I'm sorry. Uh this is part of the validation that we did with the field engineer following out these routes. And so they're field verified, categorized according to degree of difficulty of construction. There's about a hundred and fifty eight point two miles of easy terrain, uh so along existing roadways or not. Uh huge change in populations, a little bit more straightforward aerial build. Uh there was about fifty four point six miles of moderate terrain, uh which, you know, all of that's gonna drag costs of. Designing and construction cross country, difficult terrain, a little bit more complex challenging areas. And then you have a, a, a pretty considerable amount, a hundred and twenty four point eight miles.
You only got about halfway.
Very difficult terrain, uh which are reflected here. So the uh the red routes are reflected as difficult. Uh the kind of orange brown is moderate and the yellow is the, I wouldn't say even, probably the least complicated routes. And so that's kind of a show breakdown to really understand, you know, it's not just aerial infrastructure. But it has different tiers of complexity and challenges associated with it, which ultimately enhances the cost. And then by all means, Keith, at any point, uh if you want to jump in and have any additional context, feel free. Uh and again, anybody has any questions, feel free to ask, uh if you can clarify anything, provide additional information. Next slide. And so uh this is reflected in not all of the poles, because if I turn up all of the poles on, it would just turn completely colored. So as Liz alluded to, the northern region of the county uh is served by Pacific Power and Light. And so see, you can kind of see a natural line there. If we were to pull up a different map, um you can, we have all of them mapped out. Civic Core was generous enough to provide us their line maps that show their full locations, which is great. Usually they don't do that. Um but what's identified on this map is that um. Uh we've identified five thousand five hundred and thirty three C B E C poles. And six hundred and twenty one Pacific Power light poles are proposed to have new county fiber attachments. Um as part of this conceptual design. Uh six hundred and ninety five C D C poles were identified as candidates for pole replacements. Uh and Pacific Power did provide uh enough information to determine the health of those poles. And whether or not they qualify for replacement. Uh but on what's reflected here in the red, uh this route has a hundred and nineteen Pacific Power light transmission poles. Uh that are uh transmission poles always present a challenge to joint permitting. Uh because they trigger an automatic pole loading uh scenario to determine if those poles are sufficient to add additional infrastructure to. And so that would be a good point and a segue into your, your question, Liz, was uh Pacific Core uh has a robust joint use department. And program, so they uh I found them to be very organized and very responsive to joint use. Um but they do have a process. Uh it's very centralized, so their whole joint use department is based in Portland, uh and then they have regional inspectors and um crews and whatnot. They work throughout the state and in their regions. Um so they are um receptive, they're good to work with. Uh they have probably more adequate resources than some of the smaller co-ops and U Vs and whatnot for joint use. Because their, their system is so large. Um so we find them to be very uh cooperative and easy to work with as long as you just follow the process. That being said, the identified transmission pole issue, uh transmission poles are identified as critical infrastructure by the federal government. And as a result, those transmission poles are um, they are loaded and graded differently than standard uh power distribution poles. What does that mean? Uh when you, and they uh, sorry, back up, they trigger an automatic poll loading. The poll loading analysis that loads up for wind load ice uh for any, everything that's on the pole.
We don't have wind power.
Right, and. So uh so that being said, it's a, it's not something that a consultant can provide. It's something they perform themselves. And they, it, it, it takes a little bit longer timeframe to work through that process with them. Because they have to model those poles and load them. Uh but what's interesting about it is, is it's a pass fail. And so you're either on or off and you don't have, there's no room for negotiation really. So you have to plan those particular areas with contingencies in mind, knowing that you can make application with the best of intention of attaching. But it's usually a good idea to have a plan B in place in, in, in case you have to pivot to it. So some companies choose to kind of do both and invest in it so they don't lose the time. Others wait to see so that they don't invest cost to, uh because it's sometimes it may result in moving to underground. Uh which then will drive the cost up or installation of new poles adjacent to the system. And so that can provide some challenges there as well. Eric, can I ask a question like, what, what do you classify as transmission line poles? Uh transmission poles are just there, uh they have a different designation as far as a numbering system. And they're providing electrical transmission at the top, so high voltage. High voltage, so yeah, a hundred and sixty nine, a hundred and eighty. Usually um it's a hundred and twelve and up, one ten, one oh up. And they do, sometimes they classify them as like a seventy, I think it's a seventy eight K D two. Um so the pole designation, they have a number designation. It doesn't matter if they're just pure transmission line or if they're um. If they have distribution underbuild, they're still treated as a transmission uh structure regardless. So usually you, you're pretty much flat deny a pure transmission route. If there's no distribution underbuild, you know, it's a long shot. Now, that's not to say you can't go in and work with them. Uh and in special circumstances and it's kind of a case by case, kind of like Bonneville Power. Same thing, usually their stuff is off limits, but they do have some exceptions. Q life is on some. Um uh Northern Wasco County P U D share the transmission line with uh B P A. Yeah, so. I mean, generally, they won't, won't let you on. I mean, if it's the safety here, like reliability, like somebody else climb on your structure. My high voltage pole, uh the distribution level, like different, different clearances, different loading, they just fall under a whole different criteria, so.
So you just kind of described the difference from your base. Columbia Base wants to be a partner, B P and L has rules and.
Yeah, yeah, and Columbia Basin has its own transmission lines as well. Um and they have a certain criteria for as well. And I would say that if it was a pure transmission line for Columbia Basin, that they're probably going to. Uh it would be a, a one case by case for attachment. So uh moving into the Columbia Basin territory, which is spread the whole southern, you know, three quarters of the county. Um the poles identified here are um either they're of an age, uh height. Or a class that impacts the ability to attach to those poles. And so they gave us their entire database and then we went through and filtered and put on the map where um these poles were identified. So it's not necessarily every single one of these poles would require a replacement. Um but uh it's very likely a large number of them would. So they're probably end of life, if not uh already probably past end of life. Uh they're on a testament tree program, I'm sure, so they're monitoring those and they probably are regularly changing them out as part of their routine maintenance. Uh another challenge we have is these older short poles don't allow clearance for fiber optics to be underbuilt to the power system. So.
So in a lot of this analysis, it's all about overhead and nothing about in ground?
Now that we have, there's, there's underground as well, um elements of it, but the, right now we're just focused on the overhead components of it. And so, you know, the, some of these are gonna be a series of poles, some of them are just gonna be spot poles. So you have a good, good route and all of a sudden you have one or two or three poles that are bad. Um then, then you have to really compare the cost of replacing, paying that you need to, or the uh co-op to replace those poles. Or go to an underground solution and bypass those poles.
See, my thought is, if we're bringing in significant federal funds. And we can replace poles that also ensure that our power system is more resilient. And kind of save on the Columbia Basin member's side um. is more resilient and kind of save on the Columbia Basin member's side, um, then why not do both? You know, you get a better, you get a stronger power, uh, sort of, uh, system and you get fiber at the same time. Like, why wouldn't you do that?
And some of those grants do have provisions for using some of the funding to upgrade the existing infrastructure as part of it. Uh, so that can be leveraged depending on what the program is and what's offered. And, um, surprisingly, the pricing that Andy provided as a kind of average cost for pole change out was, uh, probably on the lower side of what we would typically see with some of the larger utilities. Um, so I think they're being reasonable. Uh, some of the large utilities may require that you bear the hundred percent of the replacement cost. Um, and then others are, will share cost if there's other people on the poles. Or they'll evaluate the, the remaining life of those poles and because they've already been depreciated or whatnot. And so maybe the, the portion that you're paying is, is considerably less than what you would have if it was just, they have a brand new pole that you're replacing for a five foot tall pole, make clearances, but then you're bearing the total cost of that replacement. So, um, so as mentioned, there's about six hundred and ninety-five of those, uh, poles that could be end of it. A pretty considerable amount. Um, and now I've got some cost data to share with you after this that we can kind of talk about. I'm not sure you let that potential information is there associated. Again, it's not everyone. Uh, I think it's going to be a case by case. Uh, they haven't indicated that it would be a point of replacement, but they fall within the criteria for replacement. Uh, and then the transmission poles, uh, Pacific Core, they wouldn't give the data. So there is, uh, for the transmission, we know they're going to load pass fail. For the other areas, they might, uh, when you apply, there might be, um, some of those poles that they would require to be changed out or come back to the main grid, uh, clearance issues. Typically that's, I haven't seen a, um, too small a pole end of life replacement for Pacific Core, um, come back too often. It's usually just, uh, we have to make, but there's just not enough for them to hold. And they have to be changed down. So they're treated differently. And then when you apply for permit, they'll actually let you know, they'll respond back with what those costs are going to be associated with it. So. All right. Next slide, Keith. Would you? All right. So, uh, we took the combined route via with the address points. And so this one reflects new aerial, new underground, existing county fiber, existing conduit, existing wind wave, uh, identified on this map. So that kind of shows what it all looks like, um, together and overlapping. Uh, pretty substantial system. But. So, um, based on, so what we've put together, a, a high level conceptual design of how we were going to serve the area. Obviously the, the distance and the territory is such that we, uh, we've got it broke up conceptually as a, as a north quadrant, a central and a south, uh, area. And what we've been looking at is placing cabinets in each one of those centralized to the area. And the cabinets would either house passive, uh, optical network G pond, uh, X G S pond, and new technologies for passive system versus an active system. And if you're not familiar with that, some of these cabinets passive, meaning there's no electrical components in them. It's a, all the splitters and a passive, um, uh, system coming through there. So it doesn't require electrical service. Um, and then you have an alternate that would be as a powered cabinet. So sometimes depending on where you had a service provider, they're coming out of Compton, coming out of Arlington. And the distances are such that you can't push the signal from Arlington all the way to the south region to a passive cabinet and then expect to split and go out even greater distances. Um, you just run out of, of light and power. And so we might split that up into three, three areas. Uh, and it may or may not require, uh, we're still doing a little bit of discussion with equipment providers as far as what the capabilities are, both input and output, to determine if those, it would be better served as a powered cabinet. Uh, think of it as like a remote central office essentially. Um, and, and those can be relatively small. They don't have to be like a big building or structure. You'd see some of those concrete shelters for, um, broadband and whatnot. Uh, so those could be like a smaller road size combination cabinet where it would be, uh, uh, an active cabinet served with electrical service. Cost is a little greater because you've got to coordinate with power company and be in a location where you can provide electrical service to the cabinet. And then that cabinet would be connected to a passive cabinet. And then so the signal would be much closer to push out to provide connectivity to the customer. And so that's what, um, this, visual A represents. So any questions, comments with regards to that? Hopefully it's not too technical. I'm trying to, and you can't break it down. So for people that don't necessarily know how these systems work. And they're evolving continuously. The technology is amazing. What, but what's really cool about the technology is that the fiber optic, the medium, which is, you know, travels across, uh, even though they're improving upon it, uh, systems that are twenty, thirty years old are still, you know, that able to improve the electronics and the lasers and whatnot on those systems and still utilize them. So, uh, the asset really is in the fiber optics.
So it looks like part of that is like in the moral.
Uh, the reason that we've extended and overlapped into there is that there are some, um, connections that are on the boundaries that are actually served from the cross county line from rural county. So C B C routes come out of and come back into the counties. And so we've kind of expanded that. If you, um, if you look at some of the cable houses and some of those new build lines potentially extend out because there's no direct path, uh, from within the county to reach those. And so that's why it's a little bit of a range.
We've also reached out to the moral county broadband action team. They, by the way, are doing a similar process. So they're figuring out what it would look like to do this in moral county. And so at some point, as we start to dial in on the engineered plans, some of these might look a little different because maybe moral county may need some of our lines to reach some of their folks. And we may be using some of their belt to reach ours. And so we'll start to merge the two plans together.
And partnerships and I'd be curious to hear where they're at in the process. So again, conceptual, just, uh, trying to figure out, uh, the, the best approach. So, uh, what this is reflecting, so this is a, uh, conceptual, uh, fiber design. So we've identified where's, where's underground, where's the assets. Now, uh, what Keith has done is gone and put in based on those cabinet locations, the locations, uh, of the three areas, so leveraging the infrastructure, as you can see, the wind wave blue, uh, the city county fiber green, uh, and then, uh, orange or the, where does it come in the C B C route, uh, for connectivity. So, uh, based on that, we've come up with, uh, like a cascaded fiber sizing design. So we've identified three hundred and forty-three point eight miles of twenty-four count fiber, uh, forty-three point four, five miles of forty-eight count fiber, uh, and thirty miles of a hundred and forty-four pound fiber. Um, and that's not including maintenance and slack work and whatnot. So that's reflected by, uh, the different, uh, sizes of the fiber. So essentially what, uh, with a passive system, uh, you can use substantially less fiber, uh, to connect the customers because it uses splitters. For, from a residential standpoint, a, what they call a distributed split or a cascade split configuration is very, um, it is not as dependent on a fiber quantity. So, and that's why we, so we've kind of based that on that conceptual design of keeping the fiber count slow because you keep the, the fiber counts high, uh, there's quite a bit of cost associated with it. Um, and also when you leave a cabinet, if you have all what they call active connections, so that it's not passive, it's not split. Um, everything leaving that cabinet has to have a dedicated fiber to every one of the connections from the cabinet to the subscriber. When you do a distributed split, uh, in a pond solution, what you do is you have a, a smaller count fiber leaves the cabinet. It goes out to an access point and you split out, uh, three or four or five connections for the homes. And then you go down to the next and you split out a few more. And so it allows you to, you know, connect. And you know, they've got it to the point now where you can get up to a hundred and twenty-eight, but that's usually a high density split where one fiber can beat a hundred and twenty-eight subscribers, which is amazing. Uh, we're talking about substantially less just because of the distances between them. Sure. Um, so when you split the fiber signal in a passive environment, less, uh, the distances for the increase, the more you split it, the less, the less distance. Exactly. And so that's what this conceptual design is based on that. Uh, an active system where you have a dedicated fiber to every one of those customers in a commercial, uh, industrial business approach, something that's sometimes beneficial because you have different types of services that you're providing on that type of connection. So it's better to have a home run or a dedicated fiber in more of a rural residential. It also works for businesses too. In a split environment that you can, you can leverage that. It's just, uh, it decreases the flexibility of the types of services. But I don't know that you're going to have a huge demand for commercial in the, in these environments. So.
Mine is they usually are, if we have commercial that's in, it's usually like a developer that's coming in that has substantial. They're not going to depend on us to be able to do their fiber connectivity, for instance, to their windmills or whatever that they, that they built that into their project cost. So.
And that's, you know, I know there's agricultural, uh, farming and stuff that's becoming big, uh, for connectivity. So this type of a system could provide, support, support those types of services. So. Anybody have any questions or comments about that? Okay, thanks. And so what this, uh, map reflects is splicing at cable junctions and access points for service drops planned along the cable path. Um, so what Keith has done is, uh, base this design on an actual of six drops. Uh, and drops are individual cable connections out to customers per access point. And so we've identified, uh, so this will show, shows the cabinets. It shows the splice locations and then it shows the access points and then the fiber combined. So you're starting to see more of a conceptual, uh, complete system come together. Uh, a splice is where the cable, um, is spike either in a relens is spliced together or where there's a splice that would be, um, what they call M S Ts. I saw the one out in front of these people and you've probably seen around town. Those are going to be, uh, multi-core service terminals or access points to extend drops to the individual customers. So those are kind of a plug and play environment to plug in. So that's what reflected on the map here is those access points where the splitters. And so if you came out of a cabinet, it would go out to the triangle, which would be a splice. And then the, the round circles would be where those access points are, that then drops would extend to, uh, the various connections off of that. Uh, we did not incorporate drops because that, uh, the drops to the individual, um, targets, uh, is, is, you know, really much more detailed design associated with it. It can be anywhere from a hundred feet to, you know, a thousand feet, depending on how far it is from that location. So, um, we can, we can give a pretty good guess based on the number of, you know, five hundred and five, uh, connections and what an average drop length would be to come up with what those costs would be.
I hate to interrupt, but I'm pretty sure my computer just fully died. It said fatal error and it's not working at all now. So I don't know if we can borrow either your or Pat's computer to hook the meeting all up to.
The Zoom is still working.
Is it?
Uh huh.
I'm just wondering if everyone can hear still.
I mean, uh, the line is updating. Delaney, can you hear us?
I have it on.
Yeah. And you can hear us. Okay. So just to type.
Uh, so this reflects about seventy splice points and two hundred and thirty-eight drop access points. Any questions? All right. So open discussion at this point, um, probably everybody's wondering is how much is this potentially? I didn't want to necessarily show you that. But that's, uh, you know, that's where it's going to be a strong consideration. So. I don't know, Keith, if you have that up that you can share if I can.
The cost.
Yeah, I have it too.
Big round numbers.
Okay. So, uh, what this is, uh, is an opinion of probable cost. Uh, call it a O P C. It's basically we've taken all of these quantities based on conceptual design and have plugged in, um, what are, uh, we consider to be, uh, market rates for various materials, labor, engineering, things of that nature. And so this, this is a dynamic, uh, cost worksheet because obviously those costs change all the time. You know, economy, market conditions, availability of contractors, um, things going on. And so we've done our best to plug in these numbers to give you, uh, an idea of what the cost might be from a conceptual standpoint. I'm not going to go through every line item, but what this first section is, uh, it's all summarized at the bottom. Uh, but here we got a material section. So this is identifying all the cable, the conduit, the aerial hardware, uh, splice cases, uh, access points, uh, vaults, uh, for the underground sections. We have some, we always assume a certain number of settings and poles, uh, to close some gaps or, um, bypass some areas. Um, and then we've got the cabinet costs associated with it and a couple of active cabinets, um, as needed to provide power, um, that we talked about earlier. Um, and then scrolling down a little bit, we got designing engineering costs, um, both aerial and underground. Uh, again, these are just a broad gauge number, but result in pretty considerable cost for engineering. I think that those can be fine tuned depending on the approach. Uh, and then from a construction standpoint, we have, uh, aerial construction, which includes building the main line, setting poles, uh, things of that nature. Uh, pulling fiber in a girding conduit that would apply to the C B C route to occupy that. Uh, underground construction, uh, that's a crystal ball. Because we all know rocky conditions, some areas are going to be fertile soil, other areas are going to be rock. Some are going to look like dirt and, uh.
I would assume it's all going to be rocks.
It's surprisingly, in, in my experience, uh, in this industry for a long time, the things, you'd be surprised, some areas that I thought were solid rock, there's no rock. And some areas I thought, oh, this is giving gravy and, uh, and it's pure rock. So, uh, in case in point, we did a job through, uh, underground projects, right through the middle of, from one end to the other of the dowels. And we expected rock the whole way. And we were able to trench almost every aspect of that right through the middle of the dowels. You would never know them. Um, so it was a, it was a surprise. So we had, so based on our experience and, uh, best understanding of the conditions, we try and distribute out those quantities of whether we think we can pile some, trench some, uh, different types of boring, whether it's, you know, plain dirt, rock, cobble, uh, directional boring is, is industry. It's taking over the industry. You've probably seen these, uh, rigs out there. Uh, this saves so much time and restoration of the right away when they're boring. So a lot of contractors will choose to bore everything because it just, when they're gone, you can't tell the difference. But there is other methods of construction that are actually lower cost. And so if you can go through and try and do your best by identify areas that are easier to build, then, you know, that cost will come down. Also, the way you price it, when you bid it, you can put rock adders and, uh, units and things like that onto it. So you can assume the best, but you have a provision to pay for the worst. Uh, so all considerations of that. It's kind of a design bill approach, if you're generally working on something like that. Um, and then again, just kind of the various faults and whatnot, splicing to connect all the fibers, terminate all the fiber and prep it. Uh, and then some traffic control, um, which allow your pretty light, but we have a provision for working in and around the main corridors and roads. You know, you're going to have some level of traffic control. So go ahead and go down. Then here is a permitting make ready assessment. So, um, railroads, water crossings, federal state land crossings. Those usually have these associated with them. So we try and factor in, uh, costs associated with those fees that are going to come up. Um, state highway, uh, not as much because. State highway, not as much because the ODOT's pretty good, they don't charge for use of the highway. But there's sometimes other ancillary costs associated with working on state highway permits. I imagine that the city and county are probably going to be leaning on permitting. Got a placeholder in there, but there's probably a no cost for utility, so. So we could really fine tune the costs up, you know, some assumptions we've made and to try and turn the cost down. Private landowner, that was one thing I did bring up earlier, in the north section under Pacific Power. They do not grant third-party easement rights to their overhead lines that cross private property. Columbia Basin, on the contrary, does grant that. And so, so we have a small percentage in the northern region that we would have to work with individual landowners for anything that was crossing their land. For approval for private easements. And Columbia Basin, that might be the leverage there. I did, we're getting some costs associated with private landowner, EBIT negotiations. But the county or the city might have some leverage with those landowners being a public agency.
Maybe private landowners who are hungry for internet.
Yeah, exactly, and that's usually what we're trying to offer, some connectivity is a, is a trade or whatnot, so. I find most of them receptive because there's already an existing pole line there, you're not, it's not like you're building something new on pristine land. They're already looking at something, probably the biggest thing is clearances, you know, sometimes you just, you don't want it there and never agree to it in the first place, so. Always a challenging. Joint use outside city limits, pretty big item there, that one is kind of a big unknown, just not knowing how much you can make ready prep. That needs to be done on those, we have to move existing facilities to make clearance, not necessarily change up the poles, but just. Make the pole ready for attachment, so we've got some costs associated there. There is an environmental component, ODOT requires it. As part of their condition is like you've done your due diligence. What I put in here is a high-level environmental overview, so. What that is basically is like a thirty thousand foot flyover of the whole county. And the routes and are there archaeological, cultural. You know, biological elements that are considered problem areas. Usually what we do is mitigation, design around them to the best of our ability, but you can't always do it, so. Looking at what we've looked at, it didn't seem there was a lot, but we know that we're going to encounter, so you're better off to have done the research. And have that information to call back on, again, because some permits require that you've done it. And then because, then if an issue is raised, then you can go back and refer to that. As we, we looked, so. And then here's a big, a big ticket item here is the CVC pole replacement. They gave a cost of approximately twenty-five hundred per pole average. Again, I'm not certain that all six hundred and ninety-five poles would need to be replaced, but I think, so that number could come down considerably. But again, we have to kind of assume the worst case scenario from that. So, roll up. About three point six million in materials, design and engineering, about two million. Again, that could be probably adjusted based on how, what level of detail goes into the design. Construction, about thirteen million. And then the permitting element of two point seven million, again, one point seven of that is CVC, their big financial represent. So, and then I've added a ten percent contingency, which is pretty considerable on this number, so. Looking at, for this conceptual design to place the infrastructure. About twenty-three million.
I actually, believe it or not, it's probably just going to be a plus and pleasantly surprised at this number.
I'm sure you.
I thought it was going to be much higher.
I'm sure you're probably.
Did too.
And again, there are some assumptions made there that could. Flexibly post cost.
So, the move forward was. We know we got to move forward because we got to see if we can get special money, but. That's what we're out to prove today, right?
Well, yeah, okay, so one thing, one placeholder I just want to put for the public, so you're aware. We're, the court has never contemplated that we're going to be writing a check out of the general fund for twenty-four million. What we're hearing from the state is that the initial round of ARPA dollars that they're going to be distributing, once the legislature gets this app together. They're looking at funding at twenty million dollars per project. And then there's a bead funding source that's coming in behind it in the next couple of years, that's considerably more.
Through the Inflation Reduction Act and whatnot.
Yeah, so the intent would be that the county spends what we need to do to be prepared to go after those dollars. And then once we receive the outside funding, it will actually be built. So just want to make sure that people are not going, the court's going to spend twenty-four million on that, that's not what we're doing. But we're trying to position ourselves so that when this broadband funding comes down. That we are first in line to be able to say we have a project, it's shovel ready, we're ready to go. So, in terms of next steps, we need to go back to our procurement attorney and just double check. It's been a while since I've looked at the original RFP, but I believe we wrote it in a way. So that we did not have to go out for a second RFP for phase two, which is the more detailed drawings.
That would not be good.
Correct, and we, we did it specifically so that if we liked the work that we saw out of LS networks. That we wouldn't have to go back out and go through a whole procurement process, so I want to double check with Carrie that that is.
We did that.
Yeah, I think that's how she wrote it, but I want to double check that, and if that is the case. Then likely what we would be doing is figuring out, probably asking Eric to come back with us on like, what are the key decision points? Do you need from us in terms of like, designing everything? And then having him dial in on a cost and figuring out if that's something that we're going to. Just go ahead and pay for that piece and get it engineered and, which is roughly two million, I think, in the initial cost. Or in this estimate, so.
So, basically to be shovel ready, once we got through engineering, we should be. What would look like shovel ready for grant funding.
Right, like I, I could see us going through the process of having it engineered, making sure that we have the private landowners signed off on all of the easements. That we have a plan in place with Columbia Basin on how we're going to handle pole replacement, which things we're going to do. If they're willing to pick up part of that cost as part of their regular maintenance, understanding it's probably won't be built still for several. Years out, they may actually replace some of these in the meantime, which may lower the cost and kind of doing the due diligence we need. You know, to make sure that the route that we, that Eric Steen says is this is what you need to do, that we've ensured that we've removed all of those. Roadblocks potentially, so that then when it's ready, we can go to the state. And say, we will literally just need the money to start construction.
And it could certainly be phased as well, so that's something that we talked about, I know that. You know, when you do a phased approach, if you're, maybe if you're going to build the central county, you know, sometimes then the north county and south county might be. You decide where to start.
Much controversial in the state of the county, there's no municipalities.
And then, you know, some of the, the cost consideration Bernard here is, this is just putting the infrastructure in place. You've got cost, who's going to provide services on it? So at that point, you need, you know, Windwave, you have Zayo, you have LS Networks, you have various companies that have a presence here. That, you know, potentially would be, want to be a partner in providing services, so this is really just looking at the infrastructure. One thing I don't have from a cost standpoint is, is capacity with Windwave and are they willing to share their fiber? And what is the cost associated with that? And do they have enough adequate capacity to support it? What is it going to take for CDC to, you know, what is, what's entailed there, they've got conduit, they've got faults, they've got access, but it needs cable. Associated with it, so we have some costs associated to populate that there, and no electronics. Because again, that's going to be kind of carrier, I know in Arlington, there is. There's, there's a strong presence here with backbone routes and service providers and connectivity here. There is some provisions for connectivity and con and CBC built for POP. It's probably not being utilized or underutilized, where, where it could be a central co-location for service providers and connectivity. But, and then the cabinets, the active cabinet locations of where equipment would be placed to actually provide the services. So, those are some of the components there that we don't have data for, so.
Yeah, so in terms of next steps, what I would see is. Double checking with legal counsel, that my recollection is accurate about the procurement for phase two. And then assuming she says yes, I would go back to Eric and ask for. We kind of map out like, most, yeah, most likely we would need to figure out, there probably are some decision points in here before we can give us an accurate estimate of. What it would cost to engineer something, so we may have him come back then and walk us through those decision points and get feedback.
Some of the grants also have, sorry, provisions for what is considered shovel ready. So if you have a high-level design, a conceptual plan, the cost is associated with it, but you don't want to. Invest in full design to have it ready to go. When you do that, you know, really when you design a system like that, the minute that you walk away from a structure, you know, it's. History, you don't know what's changed since you've been there, so you, I think you want to be careful of phasing and how you would approach. Grants and design associated with those specific grants, and if you're going to break it up into phases or sections like that, be very strategic. In an outline from that standpoint, so you don't get too far ahead of yourself. And spending cost that you might not be able to recoup if you're not successful with the grant, so it is, it's a very delicate balance. Of being ready, but not too ready or too far ahead.
We're already ahead of. Any questions?
No, I'm ready to move on if I'm going to make a one o'clock meeting.
Okay. Thank you so much.
I hope it was helpful.
Exciting.
Very helpful.
Really exciting. Is your camera from backup? I can keep it back up then.
Was that new when you started? Was that new when you started?
That's a whole nother, whole nother thing. Bad on it, that's a problem. Well, they should be able to see us still, Delaney, can you still see us? Yes, okay, all right, so. Commissioners, if you're comfortable with not seeing who's talking, we can just come forward because they can see us.
I am comfortable.
Okay, let's do that, um, let's, thank you so much, Eric. Thank you.
Appreciate everybody's time.
Let's move into five point two and five point three, let's just consider approval of payment agreement with Oregon Trail Solar. And consider approval of road use agreement with Oregon Trail Solar, you guys know the history of this. It's been on the court's agenda. We, so in your package, yesterday you received the latest draft. At the time, we knocked her back from our legal counsel, she got back to us late last night and says she is fine with the changes. And so I would just need a motion, this captures basically the agreement, the fifty-five hundred per mega watt. And I understand that both partners, community partners have moved forward with approving their agreements with Adam Grant. So I think we're set to approve it unless you guys have any questions.
I would move to approve the payment and lieu of taxes agreement with Oregon Trail Solar upon legal counsel's review and approval.
I second, to move to add a second, that we approved the payment and lieu of tax agreement with Oregon Trail Solar upon legal counsel's review and approval. All this in favor? I, any opposed, motion carries, and then I just need one on the road use agreement, legal is signed off on that, and Adam Grant's and Frenzy's are good at that too.
I move to approve the road use agreement with Oregon Trail Solar as presented.
So again, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the road use meeting of Oregon Trail Solar as presented, is there further discussion? All this in favor? I, I, any opposed, motion carries. We'll get both signed and over to you. Love it, okay, great. Let's move on to five point four, consider approval, approval of resolution number R twenty-two-three dash zero five. A resolution to establish the Gillum County Weed Advisory Committee related to this, despite the five, consider approval of IGA with Gillum SWCD. For Gillum County Weed Advisory Committee, Delaney, are you in a place where you can just? Or you have to take this, or don't you want Delaney to do it? Go ahead, Delaney.
It's finally here, finally done.
Yes, this project is finally wrapped up, we had discussed this a couple meetings ago. At the end of twenty-two, formalizing the Gillum SWCD board as the. Weed Advisory Committee for Gillum County, both legal councils for the SWCD. And our legal have approved this agreement, and I believe SWCD approved it yesterday, and Nori already sent me their signed copy. So we need the resolution to establish it, and then we need the IGA to secure SWCD as our. Weed Advisory Committee.
And it looks like Herb's on there and just, oh, he's just connecting, so maybe he doesn't.
And Nori are both on, it looks like.
Herb, Nori, do you have anything to add, or you want us just to go ahead and move forward with approving?
No, nothing to add, yeah, we approved it yesterday, the board did, so.
I move to approve resolution number R twenty-two-three dash oh five as presented.
All right, second, it's been moved and seconded that we approved resolution number R twenty-two-three dash zero five as presented, is there further discussion? All this in favor? I, I, any opposed, motion carries, and then motion on the IGA.
I move to approve the intercompany, intergovernmental agreement with Gillum Soil and Water Conservation District. The Gillum County Weed Advisory Committee as presented.
I second, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the intergovernmental agreement with Gillum Soil and Water Conservation District. For the Gillum County Weed Advisory Committee as presented, is there further discussion, all this in favor? Hi, I, any opposed, motion carries, okay, we'll get it signed. Thank you for your partnership.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, moving on to five point six, Gillum County Public Health update. Leah, Delaney, which one, so did they lean on or did?
Delaney, it's on there as well. How do you guys want to handle it?
Delaney, did you want me to do this?
Yes, Leo, you said you were going to take it at our meeting on Monday.
Okay, if they change their mind.
I'll jump in, Leah, if you have any questions.
Okay, we had a public health staff meeting on Monday, just for information. And then their update, they, our first school exclusion process for necessary immunizations is underway. And they've made successful contacts with the schools and daycares. They continue to work on the emergency preparedness plan updates, I think, is that with Chris too?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And it sounds like they got the WIC program up and running good, and they're going to launch the new Otis data system. Then, the, they applied for the over-the-counter dispensing licenses through the Oregon Board of Pharmacy. For the Tobacco Prevention and Education Program, nicotine replacement therapy. Which I thought was interesting that they can actually buy those over the counter, but since they're going to dispense them, they have to have a license. So. And then they're still, they're working with the schools regarding some. Programs, the tall cop program is one of them. And they're still training and planning and continuing the baby birth program. And then they're going to move forward on the carport addition to the South Gillum Health Center. Which is sixty-five thousand dollars of the COVID funding that they got approved through. Which is sixty-five thousand dollars of the COVID funding that they got approved through OHA to use. And it'll provide protection from the weather for the providers when they go out to test people in the back. And actually, the ambulance can back under it. It also adds some privacy for. Them when they're out there doing stuff. So people aren't just frightened by going, oh, so and so is getting tested. And then they're um working on their program elements. Uh, we, the quarterly report for the last quarter is attached. Um, and they told us the other day, they updated some of the um. Stuff on their website. So people can go on to the. Their website. And then we're talking with them, working on our page as far as the county's concerned. So. If anybody has anything to add. Jump in.
Just to note, I think we saw one more contract update. Is that right, Delaney? Did you see that yesterday?
Yes, one came in late yesterday afternoon. So we'll have another fiscal amendment for the next court meeting.
So I didn't spend a lot of time on this, but when you look through the. Program element. Budgeting items, there's no revenue in there. What, what's that? It's all expenses in that. I didn't look. I mean, I didn't spend a lot of time looking at this, but I did notice. That there was no revenue plugged in anywhere that I, on any of the elements that I could see.
Delaney, do you know if that revenue line item is just tracking fee for service and not OHA funds?
Yes. I'm bringing in Holly here. She'll answer that because I don't, I don't know.
Yes, that is correct.
So the OHA funds are not being tracked through this.
So if you do go to immunization, uh, when there is revenue on that one. The only thing you show on there is what you bill out and what you collect.
On the previous quarter where we were short on the WIC, we showed that we were using um. Uh, county funds to come over and balance.
So the general fund contribution that we make then will show up in different uh program areas, right? If there's a shortage uh from OHA.
Correct.
Other questions from the public or commissioners? Did you guys have anything to add? Did I miss?
I don't think so. You did a great job, Leah.
No, we can't. We can add balance sheets to those reports so you can see um that, but then also Nathan will have um the. Should have a report on how much funds are left in the county.
That would be great.
So Holly, do you want to explain to them about how you're taking the money now as opposed to earlier?
No. Just kidding, just kidding. So, so initially, um, before we got into this, we thought we wanted to make the least amount of work for the county that we could. So I thought, well, every time the state gives the county money, we'll just bring the money over to the health district into our separate program funds. Well, then in November, we ran into, uh, they were actually taking back funds. So if you don't spend them. And it created a bookkeeping nightmare. So. Right now, um, I am just only taking funds from the county that we are spending. Uh, so the county is going to have a balancing in each fund and we will. Have a, a balance um until we disperse our funds.
And she'll keep track of all of those.
Yeah, I have spreadsheet and um keeping, keeping track of what I believe you should still have in your fund and of course, what I have in our fund. It's very complex.
I'm sure it is.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks, guys. We'll see you. See you next time. Okay, let's move into new business. Six point one is consider approval of revised position descriptions for executive assistant to the county judge, assistant to the commissioners slash employee resources officer. Appraiser, data analyst, deputy tax collector, which is Kelly, um, and deputy assessor. Um, so basically, uh, Miranda and I just routinely go through position descriptions and make sure that we're updating them. Regularly and um there are some new laws that have come out related to our ability to, for instance, check DMV records. Um, and needing to have that specifically explicitly said in a job description. Uh, it's driving as essential duty in order to be able to make sure. For instance, that our road department books have maintained their CBLs and things like that. Um, and so this is the first of many that you will see. We're just taking them in small groups. Um, so for the four uh in front of you, uh, for the executive assistant to the county judge. We are also adding a remote work section. Miranda is working on a remote work policy. And just so that it's clear, if we ever have a another COVID situation, if we want to be able to provide flexibility to. Employees who may need to work from home for any reason, this will give um some guidance and guidelines to how we decide if somebody is able to work remote and.
Greater bathrooms at the courthouse.
Yeah, um, exactly. When that happens, um, we may need that because we may not have been to the courthouse for a few months. So. Um, uh, so Miranda is working on the policy, but we thought we'd go ahead and just doesn't make the designations within the job descriptions as we're updating them. Um, so for executive assistant to the county judge, it adds a remote work section. Um, adds in the driving requirements language that we need to have uh by state law. And then it adjusts the education and experience listed to align with positions that are in a similar pay classification. So that's the other thing. Brandon, I've been going through to make sure they're consistent. Um, we have, they're, they're all over the place on if a, if a diploma is sufficient, if somebody needs an associate degree, if somebody needs a bachelor's, there's not a lot of consistency. And so we're trying to be consistent, uh, create some consistency on um pay schedules. Um. For the assistant to the commissioners, employee resource officer. Uh, again, add the remote work, add the driving requirements language, adjust the education and experience. Um, also as Miranda does a lot of admin work for a lot of our committees and boards and some which were missing from her. Uh, position description. So we went ahead and added those in. Um, for the appraiser, uh, data analyst, deputy tax collector, it's just the remote work and the driving requirements. And Chet has signed up on both of those. Uh, for the deputy assessor, uh, same thing, it's remote work, driving requirements. And then also, um, under the current CBA, uh, Jamie's position, she's currently uh a thirty-seven point five hourly. Under the CBA, uh, if the employee and the court agree. Um, those positions can be moved up to forty. And so this is one where Jamie has agreed and would like to have her. ET brought up to forty, Chet signed off on it as well. Um, and yes, and then you'll also notice a new thing in uh the briefing is that now we're. Uh, specifically uh calling out which part of the strategic plan this is related to. So this is related to goal one, strategy one. Of uh the strategic plan. Question, same. Nope, no questions. Okay, we just need a motion. You can do all four at once.
I move to approve the revised position descriptions for executive assistant to the county judge, assistant to the commissioners, employee resource officer. Appraiser, data analyst, deputy tax collector, and deputy assessor as presented.
Sorry.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the revised position descriptions for executive assistant to the county judge. Assistant to the commissioners slash employee, employee resource officer. Appraiser, data analyst, deputy tax collector, that's one, um, and then deputy assessor as presented. So further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
So instant follow up to this, how, how close are we like, I mean, we've obviously have. CDL issues for the road department, getting those job descriptions updated. How soon will that come along?
Um, well, we're just taking a chunk out of time. So if you would like us to turn to those next.
Yeah, we think we need to move that up on the priority list, just through what we've been through on this last part.
Um, absolutely. We can do that next. Okay, um, so are we basically putting the language back in the previously?
Well, there are some, like with the correction group, for one thing that was really screwed up in the job description, it, it gave them time to get the M shot training. Like a year. But they had to see to go immediately and their job, ninety percent of their job, they need the M shot for, ten percent of them need the CDL. And you can get around not having the CDL for a little while, but you cannot get around not having the M shot. So there were some of those things in there and getting the, the CDL requirements in there. Based on how long it's going to take to train and.
Right. So for, am I correct? It is my assumption correct that for the. Road equipment operators that we want them to have a CDL, they need to have it upon like.
Everybody has to have a CDL. Um, but are we, do we want to handcuff, I mean, this was my deal, is we may not be able to get anybody and they may have to go through, hire them and get them through CDL training before they can actually do anything. And we need to address that at the hiring process, it screws out in the posting for the positions, you know, based on what the. And they have to have one for the job, obviously, but we may get to where we can't hire somebody based on workforce.
Yeah.
Unless we run them through the training, which we now say we're willing to pay up to five thousand dollars to get them through a CDL training.
So would the preference then to be for each of those positions? To be able to acquire the CDL within a set number of.
I think we have to do that to leave ourselves, um, to not lock ourselves out and not be able to fill a position.
And do you want us to step that at six months and stuff? That's the probation.
I think we can do it in six, based on what Dewey found out about training costs and, and availability of training.
Okay.
Um, I think we can do within six months.
Okay, we can make those adjustments. Um, anything else on that? Okay, let's move in. Speaking of our road department, seven two is consider approval of uh Gillum County Road Department Equipment. Purchase. I see Jolie's on there and Delaney's on there. Do you guys want me to take this? Or do you want to do this? Or Pat, you can do this too, if you want. Who would like to take this?
Let's see how Jolie does.
Are you on, Jolie? Oh, she says she doesn't have a speaker. Um. Delaney.
So this is, yeah.
Delaney, I'll take it. She just unmuted, I think.
This is, this is for the truck.
Do you want me to take it?
This is for the purchase of the um Vector Jetter Truck. Um, Jolie and Dewey did all of the work on this. I just put this together and then coordinated with legal counsel. Um, so the road department um isn't able to properly clean out the culverts and now there are quite a few that need to be cleaned out. And so purchasing this truck would better allow the road department to clean and maintain all of the culverts. Um, Dewey and Gary um traveled and inspected the truck in person and then they gathered the necessary comparables and everything like that. Um, and that's about it. Pretty simple purchase. Our legal procurement specialist reviewed this and had us go get some additional comparables just to check the box. Since this is an intermediate size procurement based on the purchase price. So those are added in at the end of the briefing.
Yeah, it's kind of a funky, anytime we're purchasing a used, there's a weird, it's hard to find comparables for a used.
And those pictures are in there for the actual unit.
Correct. Questions about this? There's sufficient money in the budget. Uh, it would come out of there.
Really expensive to rent to do this.
I, I just had a question. Did, did, do they have any, how many miles does this thing have on it? I never saw that anywhere.
I don't know.
I know Dewey and I had the discussion, but I don't remember off the top of my head what the mileage was on it. It wasn't a very extensively used truck, I know that. I wasn't worried about that, but I couldn't tell you what it is. It was, we're not buying a beater.
Yeah, it doesn't look too bad from the pictures.
Yeah.
Uh, do I have a motion?
Yeah, um, I move to approve the purchase of the two thousand and eleven Vector Jetter Truck. From one seven incorporated in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars.
My second. It's been moved down seconded that we approved the purchase of the two thousand and eleven Vector Jetter Truck from one seven incorporated in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars. So further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, I, any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so I just have one comment on this and maybe Delaney can answer this. Dewey had the um. Blurb in here that said our internet at the road shop has been out since January fifth. So it has been a struggle to getting the information for almost seven weeks. It's hard to do all on a cell phone.
And that's still the case yesterday. Do we know where we're at with that? He still has no computer.
Had RAP, uh, we reached out to RAP comp to have them come do their workday to uh look at the county internet issue. And the day that they happened to come was the day where Jolie was out of the office and Dewey, I couldn't get ahold of him. And we needed to speak with Home Telephone slash Rally Networks. And since RAP comp and I are not authorized to talk to them about the account, we couldn't make any headway.
So here's the problem. We're going into budget season and he needs a computer as AP.
So I need to be able to have access to the Rally Networks account so I can speak to them to figure out the issue directly. They had sent the paperwork to Dewey the middle of January, I think, when I called them when we were doing interviews. And I don't think that paperwork got through and probably due to this internet issue as well, but we just need to work on getting that loop closed so we can. Get the internet working. RAP comp checked it out and said that everything on their end looked okay at the shop site, but they're thinking it might be just. Rally Networks needs to either flip the switch on or it's something on their end.
So I know from personal experience that if you don't have, like, I, I think our IT person should have access to. That account and not just.
Absolutely.
So.
So basically, well, probably this, well, next week, because Delaney is off to county court tomorrow, but, or to um.
Kind of call.
County College tomorrow, but next week, we'll dig in and make sure that she's authorized.
Yeah, it's really, it's making it difficult. I can't even get answers on things with. He's trying to do stuff on his cell phone, have the service and he usually goes into the mornings and spends some time and he can't, I mean, it's.
And I know they, they won't, they won't let you do anything unless that person, unless they have authorization. So that's a problem. And I've had that problem with them before. Yeah, I wish Jolie, Jolie knows some of this, but she can't talk to you. So I just, yeah. Okay, yeah, she had to drop her last week.
Um, we'll get it ironed out. Um, okay. Uh, six point three is consider approval of Gillum County Transportation Vehicle Purchase. Should I have on, should I, anyone? And not dispatching? Yes. Do you want to walk uh the court through this? Do you have a speaker? Microphone?
Well, while she's getting there, my first question is going to be which one? One's got eight thousand miles.
No, she says I do, but she doesn't have a voice. So I will take this one. Delaney can fill in behind me. Okay, so, um. Are the person who was assigned from ODOT to work with our public transportation um department. Reached out and there is a nonprofit um in central Oregon that has a two thousand and seventeen Ford Transit that they are. Um, trying to sell. And so. Uh, they have two of them, right. Um, but there's one in particular, uh, that the cost is like ten thousand five hundred. the cost is like ten thousand five hundred that um the transit coordinator was recommending uh Shanaya and her department take a look at. Um, so they, and part of the reason ODOT reached out is because these fun, these vehicles were purchased with ODOT grants, which means they have to stay in service with public entities um within a certain amount of mileage and time. Um, so this allows the nonprofit to stay within their grant compliance by it coming over to us. Um, so they would like to purchase one of the vans. It would be stationed here in Arlington um and help them, they're working right now on, on setting up some fixed routes for their transportation schedules. Um, and so this would enable that. Um, funds for the purchase as well as any needed repairs would come from some of the uh stiff grants that are rolling over from the previous uh budget cycle. And, and so you will see it, um, this is a lining with goal number with four point three in the strategic plan, just as an FYI. Recognition is the court approved of purchase, just like in the previous, uh, Delaney worked with, um with Shanaya and our procurement council to just double check that this, we can purchase this. Um, so you have some comparables in there. As you will see, um, this is a pretty good deal.
Really, really good.
Um, for the public's vantage point, where we would be asked to pay ten thousand five hundred uh a similar um uh van if we were to go into a dealership is closer to thirty thousand. So it would save about twenty thousand for the county to pick this up and also how about another nonprofit in central Oregon who wants to stay in compliance with the, our friends at ODOT.
Shanaya also provided a Kelly Blue Book value, um that was something that the procurement attorney had requested, and that came in between thirty-six to thirty-nine thousand.
And that was for a rig with eighty-five thousand pounds on it.
Yeah, so basically a quarter of the cost and less than mileage.
Well, I, I guess my question is, because it's a little vague, it says the cost per van is about ten thousand five hundred. It says one has eighty-two hundred, one has twelve thousand, which one are we buying? And is that ten thousand five hundred guaranteed the cost?
I think, am I correction, I have the, it's, it's ten thousand five hundred to buy it, but what we aren't sure is whether there's gonna be any repairs or maintenance that we need to do as soon as we get it. Is that correct?
No, but I, I get the, the, it's just that in the, in this first attachment, it says the cost per van is about ten thousand five hundred.
Information we had at the time of the briefing, um it's been confirmed that the vehicle price will be ten thousand five hundred dollars.
Do we get to buy the one with the least amount of mileage?
Can we get the eighty-two hundred one? Should I?
Might not be the one in the best shape though, too. Who knows?
She's not sure right now, that's what she said back.
I, I mean, either one is.
Twelve thousand is pretty.
Either one is low mileage vehicle for not very much money. But I, I would, you know, assume providing there isn't something terribly wrong with the one with the least amount of mileage, I'd recommend we purchase it.
Okay, try to get the better one, should I? Do I have a motion for the purchase?
Sure, department.
Yep, I move to approve the purchase of the two thousand and seventeen Ford Transit van from Albatry in the amount of ten thousand five hundred.
A second.
So move to end seconded that we approved the purchase of a two hundred, five, two thousand and seventeen Ford Transit van from Albatry. The amount of uh two thousand five hundred dollars. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, guys, we have two executive sessions and we will not be making any decisions coming out of it. Uh, so let's go ahead and do any announcements in next meeting first. So if there's anything uh the public may be interested in and they're working in, they can hear that. Then we will go into an executive session. We will not make, be making any decisions coming out of it, so um folks are welcome to stay around, but if you want an hour back of your day, feel free to take that too. Um.
So we definitely won't be making any decisions.
We definitely will not.
Well, I'm not completely sure what's on the first exactly, but I, I'm wondering if we shouldn't give some guidance to make a decision on it, but I'm I'm guessing I want to.
You want me to say there's a possibility we'll come back out?
Yeah, I would say there's a possibility based on some information I've got.
Okay, so there's a possibility we may be making a decision coming back out. Um let's still go ahead and take care of announcements the next meeting. Um, and then uh if there is a decision, we will come back out. Um, and obviously have to make that in our public session. So next meeting is scheduled for March first, uh that will be in Condon. We are also um have on the books a joint meeting with the Court of Arlington and the Court and all of the taxing districts are invited. Um, so that one will be in Condon. Just as a reminder for folks, we're uh doing this quarterly and we bounce back and forth between the two. So the last one was in Arlington, the one this uh March first will be in Condon, and then we'll be back in Arlington in three months. Um, that's all I have for meetings. Uh, Pat, what do you got going on?
Um, just been kind of busy. I went to all the AOC committee meetings, except I didn't get all the ledge committee in, but had, had taken granddaughter to get orthodontist, only got part of it on the telephone. Creemant last Friday, UAC had a meeting Monday that I attended, E O C A, I mean. Um, went to the city council meeting last, city council meeting, last court meeting and court meeting for the strategic plan that they're working on Monday of this week. Uh, Lord John Dayak meeting, so into a bunch of meetings lately, kind of overwhelmed by Zoom and meetings. But uh, yeah, Norcore has a board meeting tomorrow at ten, so that's my next one. Just lots of meetings.
Leo, what you got?
Okay, so I was just gonna share that they got the fourth driver, um, part-time driver hired, and it was Cassandra Platt. So, welcome to the team, Cassandra. And then we got county college. Tomorrow, we're leaving. Hopefully, Delaney's not sick. Stay healthy. And we're gonna be right in Pat's um wheelhouse, because gonna be public or transportation and road maintenance and all that. So be double checking, yeah.
Okay, all right. Sherry always did, you know.
And then we had our public um health staff meeting on Monday, which I think I already said, so. Um, anyway, that's it for me.
Um, okay, so for me, I was in Salem last week for AOC person. I also stopped by and saw Representative Smith. Talked to him about childcare and some of the stuff that we're working on here. So I'm hoping there may be some good movement in the legislature this year on some uh planning for facilities and possible some uh related uh funding for workforce development. Um, speaking of childcare facilities, uh Jeff is continuing to work with Condon Early Learning Center on the expansion project. Um, they are, they have a rough idea of where it's gonna be and how many classrooms and um those pieces. So they are dropping it now into a site plan um that will go before the city planning commission. Um, just as a reminder, we authorized funding for Jeff to kind of get them to up and to through the planning process, and then it will become their project, so it'll be handed over to them um to find the funding for. Um, but I will probably volunteer as a parent um to help them on that side. So that is moving forward. Um, let's see, other things, uh, we are, I'm continuing to have some discussions around housing and trying to figure out the best vehicle for development. Um, there's some nonprofits that are very, doing some interesting work uh that I want to talk to. Been in touch with Nate Stice, we talked about that last uh meeting, and um so um, he's uh still kicking around the idea of possibly doing some consulting work with us or landing out a partner and helping with some development. Um, the other thing I wanted to flag is um there was a uh group of funders that actually came through, a lot of the big uh foundations that you know of, Oregon Community Foundation, Ford, Roundhouse Foundation, a bunch of uh philanthropic folks that came through art spending in particular uh last week. One of the ideas that has come up is to look in Condon in particular at creating what's called an arts district, which may unlock some state funds to be able to support what the Condon Arts Council is doing and the rehab of the Liberty Theater. Um, they're also right now looking at bill at uh possibly purchasing uh the mortuary next door, turning that into studio space. Um, and so there is a tentative uh meeting next Friday where um a woman coming out of the state who works in um trying to remember, it's the Oregon Arts Commission, I think, is where she works. But to just kind of give an idea of what this might possibly look like, and losing their potentially looking at Condon as a pilot was because of some of the Main Street uh stuff that the chamber has been doing. Um, and the city's investments um in the facades and all of that kind of stuff um there. They thought that might be uh enticing to the legislature to possibly make us a pilot, uh one of our communities. So, um, once I have that uh information formed up, I will ask Delaney to send it to you guys in case you're interested in listening in on that meeting. It will be in Condon, I think the afternoon of the twenty-fourth, but I don't have a time or location. Um, let me see if there's anything else that is pending. I think those were the nature, I'm just checking my calendar. Um. Had Catherine Brenner and I had a meeting yesterday with uh the new governor's housing uh policy person. It's just an introductory meeting to kind of give her a preview of what we, some of the projects we've been talking about here and get us on the governor's radar if there is housing funding that comes out in this legislature that maybe we can uh snag some of that. Um, hopefully directed to some of our partners who are doing development, like the port and others. Um, so I just wanted to flag that as well. Um, and I think that is it for me. Um, anything else in terms of announcements?
So what about the um congressional, is, is the earmark money?
The earmark money.
And what do we need to do on that to?
So, we, um, there's a couple of things that we can get. I went through uh Senator Merkley's list, who he got funded last year, looking for similarities with products that we've talked about. Um, so there are a few potential, they have some wastewater uh projects that I want to dig into a little bit and see if they, for instance, the city of Condon is looking at doing um extension of water into the fairway project. Uh, possibly if there was gonna be development at Proctors, maybe that would be a vehicle potentially um to access for uh water and sewer development. Um, but I need to double check that it can fund new builds and it's not trying to clean up existing problems. So I need to kind of get that squared on whether those would be acceptable.
You're on it.
I am on it. Um, the other one that I specifically asked for is it looks like this, and who's got some fundings for some of the other arts um folks around us in eastern Oregon, and so I was asking on behalf of Condon Arts Council, there may be some funding there for them to finish um sort of shoring up the Liberty Theater. Um, so.
One thing that might kind of just get on your radar screen that might fall under that, the ports have some discussions about doing a memorial or something on the grain facility down here that would be a, you know, gateway to Gillon County or something that we would become known for, visible and get the Arlington sign and lighting fixed. So some of them might fall under some historical urgency type.
Yeah, this one in particular that we're looking at is a community facilities, um USDA program. Actually, it's a rural community facilities, and for whatever reason, they count museums and theaters in a community facility, even if they're not publicly owned. And so we're trying to see if we can squeeze some of those in, but if there are other community facilities that, that catch for us in particular is you have to show that you don't have another way of financing it, which is gonna knock us out, but.
USDA, there's a lot of that.
Yeah, but may allow like a nonprofit to be able to do that. Um, so that's why it's kind of, we have some projects that might fit as long as the county is not the funder or applicant. Um, so, and then there are a couple of housing projects that Merkley got funding for that I need to dig into on whether they are income related. Um, one of the pieces that we gave feedback to the governor's office yesterday on is that a lot of these um housing funds have strict income limitations and, and or you have to have all veterans living in there. And so what we explained to her is in rural communities, we need a mix. Some of them may be low income, some of them may be veterans, some of them may be waste management employees, and we need to have the flexibility to have a wide variety of people coming in. So we don't have critical mass on any single one of those populations. So we gave that feedback to the state. I highly doubt the feds really care much about what we think about that. So I don't have a lot of hope that the federal housing dollars are gonna be helpful in like some of the projects that the court's working on, some of the other projects that we talked about, um, working at developing, but we'll still run it down and just see if it's an option. Um, so those are kind of the big three that I've been looking at. Infrastructure, water infrastructure, community facilities, and then possibly some housing. Um, any other questions? And those are due back on March third, those appropriations, so. Kind of a tight timeline to have.
Yeah.
Um, anything else on that? Anything from the public? We've covered a lot of them. Um, okay, so here's what we're gonna do. The court is gonna go into executive session. We have two different topics, so I'm gonna announce them both at the beginning. Um, we're not gonna come out and go back in in between uh sessions. Uh, there is a possibility the county may, or the court may take action coming out of the executive session. This point, I don't know what time that will be, other than that was a hard stop at one. Um, so before then, for making a decision. Um. Anything else on that piece? Okay, so the Gillen County Court will now meet in executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two point six six zero two F, which allows the court to meet in executive session to consider information or records that are resent from uh, from law by public inspection. Following the discussion, the court will continue to meet in executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two point six six two D, which allows the court to meet in executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Designated staff will be allowed to attend the executive uh session. All other members of the audience, yes. Are asked, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Are asked to remain in the public virtual meeting room, the court convenes in a private virtual meeting room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we'll return, we will return to the audience in the public virtual meeting room. Okay, yep. Okay, so it is twelve to seven, and we, the court is not going to be making any further decisions for today, and so we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.